to our board table this evening.
I'll take this. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call to order the June 30th, 2022 meeting of the Board of Education. We have before us the agenda for this evening. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. I do just want to take a moment of notice that Mr. Steve Rossen, our attorney, is present with us virtually today. He's Flat Steve and he's joining us tonight. Appreciate you joining us, Steve. All right, we have an abbreviated agenda this evening. You see the consent agenda here. Are there any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There is none. We now move to the new business portion of tonight's agenda. We have the 2021-2022 budget amendments. Ms. Jones?
Madam Chair, you have in front of you the budget amendments for all funds as it is related to closing out the fiscal year 2122.
Ms. Jones, was there anything particularly out of the ordinary that you want to bring our attention to or anything specific you want to say regarding these?
No ma'am, we're just true enough of the numbers and making sure everything is good to go.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions? There you go.
For the public knowledge and for a new board member, we explained the reason why we had this meeting at the end of the fiscal year and some of this brief overview details why we did this because if we don't use money or move money, it goes away and that kind of thing.
That is correct. We do have to use the funding. The state funding does go away, so therefore we have to maximize our money the best we can. Yesterday was the last payroll, so I had less than 48 hours to make sure that the books balanced and making sure that we were within compliance with local government commission.
Any other questions for Ms. Jones? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the budget amendments.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Thank you, Ms. Jones. Thank you for your hard work. I happened to be in the central office earlier in the week and the buzz of the lower floor was palpable. We do appreciate the work that's put in and the shortened timeframe in which to get everything finished. Now you can breathe. We have an item on the new business this evening of the Eastleigh Middle School, Sandley Middle School, Wesley Middle School, Lee County High School, and Southern Lane High School security entrance bids. Ms. Hilliard?
The Finance Committee reviewed the Eastleigh, Sandley, Wesley, Lee County High, Southern Lane High School security entrance bids at the committee meeting on June 23rd. As a result, excuse me, the committee recommends awarding the security entrance bid to Mutter Construction LLC in the amount of $1.2 million, funding source from ESAR, and this is to enforce additional security to those, to our middle and high school for now, to get those started. It's additional security that's going to be placed.
Madam Chair, could she explain what, what is this actually? Is this something at the doorway? Is it something at all of the doors?
So all the doors are currently already secure. These are going to be additional entrances. So once you get to the front doors, you will have to go through the office. You will not be able to go beyond that.
Mr. McNeil, do you want to come and kind of give a brief? I know you do. You love coming to the podium so much.
Yes.
As he's coming, if I may, he'll be able to explain more, but there are actually going to be some extra entrances cut in to the existing. And also, Chris, I know you'll explain this, but there's, there's our drawings up at the central office for if anybody wants to come look at them.
That's right. And the entrance is like Lisa County High School. You can walk in the front entrance once they buzz you in, and you can go down the hallway where we're going to be putting a storefront glass with doors that students can use at the beginning and the end of the school year. I'm sorry, school day. And then we're going to cut in a door going into the office. So once the school is locked down, they get buzzed in, they walk down the hallway, they have to go directly into the office, and then the office person that buzz them decides if they can go inside, or they called a teacher or student to leave. And that's the same thing at Southern Lane, Sandley, Wesley, and Eastleigh. Eastleigh and Wesley, you can walk in the front door, you can go down the hallway unless the office person is there. So it will be adding another set of doors at Eastleigh and Wesley right beside the front office.
Section 10.
Yes.
Having visited some of the schools, you know, where you go until all this had happened recently, there, there's a possibility that they would leave the doorjar, people going in and out. Is there any safety mechanisms for that that's going to go into place? Like an alarm or something that would go off for somebody to open the door or let the door open?
At this point, it's not, but we can see about adding that.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate it.
What these security entrances, we've had these before, finance, F and T, a couple of different times over. And initially, we were going to fund that out of an alternative source, but we got approval to use ESAR funds for this as a school safety upgrade. Is that what I understood?
Yes, ma'am. And we had three bid dates. We had a bid on May 11th. We didn't have no bids. May the 24th, no bids. And finally, we had one bid on June 16th.
It's a tough market right now.
And they did this, and they did the security entrances at Johnson County schools, so about all their schools.
One last thing. With some recent things that have occurred as, as far as the laws and the fundings that's coming forward, and some of it is supposed to be earmarked for security, is that something we can look into in advance about if the doors are left ajar or are open? Is that where the things would be going to look at to be prepared when it comes in?
I ain't talked to the engineer and architect.
Okay.
If there's sensors we can put on outside doors to see if they're not closed or not. Maybe alarms. You can buy these doorbell things. It's easy that you can put in, if it's open, it's alarm still till you close it.
I know a lot of nursing homes have that and so forth. It's just a buzz that tells you the door's not secure. Very good. Any other questions for Mr. McNeil? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve the security entrance bid.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have an item, everyday intervention contract. I'm sorry, I read that wrong at first. Ms. Hilliard?
The Finance Committee reviewed the everyday intervention contract at the committee meeting on June 23rd, 2022. As a result, committee recommends approving the everyday intervention contract funding source, ESAR and state funds. And I know Dr. Waller has a lot more information on this. Excuse me. This is a piece which the agreement was included that will help with the absences and add support to that to keep up with over too many absences. So it's just a one more piece that will add, will help out our social workers to flag those students, and they'll get a certain number of messages when their students are missing. And then they'll have, they'll also receive support to help them adjust with those types of absences if there are anything else that needs to be done. And I know Dr. Waller has much more on this if there are other questions.
Are there any questions regarding this contract?
Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I would like to make a statement that I actually called them before we came in here. And there's wonderful examples, and I'm not certain how they can actually afford to do what they're doing with the process, with the nudges going through. And they also mail things out. And looking at the numbers, what they're charging, and also mailing things out, that is a huge difference. So I don't know where that compensation's coming from, but she actually sent samples, and I'll be more than glad. They just came in while we were here. I can send them to the board as well. But it talks about how they can nudge and how, when families apply, how they connect to the support bot and things like that. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve the everyday intervention contract. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have any seconds. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. At this time, we have a motion to go into closed session. Ms. Hilliard?
I move the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session under NCGS 143-318.11A1, A3, and A6 to discuss confidential student information under NCGS 115C-402, to discuss confidential personnel information under NCGS 115C-319, and 115C-321, and to consult with the board's attorney and maintain the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We'll remand to closed session.
At this time, I'd like to reconvene in the open session. We have two motions from personnel.
Madam Chair, make a motion that the Le County Board of Education approve the two-year administrative contracts as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We have a motion for the human resources report.
I move that the Le County Board of Education approve the human resources report as presented.
Second.
And we have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. At this time, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. We stand adjourned. Thank you. I'm sorry?